We just are so proud of you and want to recognize you as earning your distinguished certificate from MSBA. We know how hard it is to be a board member. We enjoyed working with you so much as a board member, and we're just so proud to be able to share this distinguished certificate with you as well. Fellow board members, while I walk down, does anyone else have any other comments they'd like to make?
I'll go. I will say that it is no secret that Megan Marshall is my friend. She is my friend. I consider her a sister. I am ecstatic. I'm ecstatic because in the month of February, us celebrating Black History Month, and for you to have paved the way to being the first person of color to serve on this Board of Education, that opened the door for me. And I appreciate that, and I want to recognize that. And then for you to also set the bar so high by being the second person in this district to be able to have served on this board, to been able to accomplish the level of distinguished. We also have former board member Jackie Clark here who-
Is that if I'm going to be an effective leader, I have to do what I'm asking others to do. So the amount of hours that teachers put in on their own time continuing their education and becoming better, it was my honor to do this because I believe that you should inspect what you expect. And leaders are readers, and if there's professional development out there and things to continue your education, we have to go get it. It makes us better, and it makes the people around us better. So, thank you. I miss you all dearly, but I'm having a blast.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Congratulations. Awesome. Now we'll move to item 3.05, our board metrics update. And Dr. Barger?
Good evening. Wanting to share with you our monthly metrics update as we have brought to the board each month. As you'll be reminded, we have right time to metrics in which each month we bring to the Board of Education an update with regard to data that is best timed with regard to the release of that data. This particular month, we're looking specifically at extracurricular participation to date. And we've added one other piece, which is with regard to the Board of Education's request from the DIAS last month with regard to CSEP action plans 2.3 and 2.5. So that will be a quick update because really what I'm going to share with you is what our process is going to be to provide the Board of Education those updates on a regular basis. And depending on how quickly you were into emails earlier today, you may have already seen a pre-glimpse of that. What our plan of action is going to be, if you'll recall, as we looked at our CSEP and looked at where we were in terms of being progressing towards being on target, we saw that there were two action plans in which it looked like we may not be progressing to on target. There is some ongoing conversation if perhaps the metric was not the best metric for us to have used to measure those targets. But all in all, it is worth us articulating to the board on a regular basis how we are utilizing student voice and student and staff wellness in our schools. So what you will find is that each month, each of our schools will be completing a form, a template, asking for what ongoing measures they are doing in the area of 2.3 student voice and 2.5. And then more specifically, what has happened in the given month different than what is ongoing, so that you don't just get the same report each month, but you get to see what's happening from month to month. They'll be aggregated in a PDF so that you can see each of our schools, and that will be provided to the board via Board Update during the week of the Board meeting. So we will have a month-to-month update as we progress and see some of the qualitative data, even if we may or may not see some of that quantitative data moving, given the metric that has been chosen. So that's an update with regard to how we'll be communicating that from the last metrics update. And then really, I'm going to turn this presentation over to Dr. Kenny and Dr. Potts, since the extracurricular world is really in their area of expertise.
All right. Good evening. How are you? So, Dr. Potts and I are responsible for CSEP goal 1.5 on extracurricular and co-curricular opportunities. Just want to remind you that we had, if you remember, this is a three-year plan, but we had to kind of redo the benchmark here for this year, just knowing that we had lots of changes at both elementary and secondary with our sixth graders going to the middle school, as well as band being kind of six, 12 now, and a few other small changes. Okay? So the goal is to increase participation and opportunities for extracurricular and co-curricular involvement for students of all backgrounds and levels. So you can see, I'll leave that up there for a few minutes. Oopsie, sorry. So you can see, we have them listed by school. Just a couple of pieces to remember as you're looking at this data for elementary. And Dr. Potts will share secondary in a second, just that this again is our benchmark year. And a reminder that we had kind of talked when we revised a CSEP, just that K-2 is really hard to have come early before school and really stay after school. They're very little. And so we just have to be creative with some of those opportunities. And most of our clubs and opportunities come before or after school in elementary. We also added, this is first semester data, last spring, we added three enrichment stipends to every elementary, including our online academy. And we had principals go back and look at, to make sure that we had kind of a range of activities. A lot of our activities were based in the arts, which are really great, but we have some kids that maybe that's not their thing, whether it be fine arts or choir and instruments. And so we really looked at how can we kind of expand those. And then we talked a little bit about barriers, which obviously transportation is one, and so some schools have built it in during the day. And then I just think that it's really important that we find other ways to connect with kids, not just through extracurricular activities and opportunities, but I think that's important to mention, too. And then the second slide you can see is just the co-curricular and extracurricular activities participation by ethnicity. If you have questions, I'm happy to answer them, or I can let my counterpart, Dr. Potts, go.
Do we have any questions?
I have a question.
Board Member Murdock?
On that slide, can you help me with math?
Which one?
So on the co-curricular activities by ethnicity, so just like seeing one of these, we have 931 black students in the district, 320 participated, and it's listed at 10.5%.
I think she's showing the percent of all kids who participated. Yes, it's 10%.
I think it's the-
Yeah.
So she's not saying a third of students of that, whichever one you used, was participating. She's saying-
It feels like the metric would be better served, though, if we put the percentage of the group that we're identifying that's participating in the activity, because in the previous slide, we did it by the school percentage based on the students.
We certainly can do that.
I just think it's going to confuse-
Yeah, it does. We have all the data. We're happy to share it however you choose. It'd be fine.
Right. Yeah. Oh, yeah. So, yeah. Just for consistency's sake, yeah.
Perfect.
Thanks.
So my only question, and this is assumption, but I just want to make sure I'm correct. Woodland Elementary, is that one pretty, is that one 98.8? Is that because they have implemented it during the school day for their extracurriculars?
They have.
Okay.
So they have a club system. I think it is on Fridays, and it's about midday. I think it's at 1 o'clock-ish.
Okay.
And so they have every student in the building is in some sort of club. They're pretty, I went last week, and they're pretty fun. Not every building has done something during the day, but Woodland and Lee Summ elementary, there's a couple others that are looking into it.
So if there are students that choose not to participate, what does that look like? Are they just shipped to a room, and they're just kind of sitting there?
Everyone's in something. They're pretty, they're pretty, there's a huge wide range. I saw cheerleading club. I saw handwriting club. There was math club, games club. Kids are really excited, and they're choosing something. I didn't know anybody who wasn't in some one-on-one.
Just a question, action plan, what are we doing to eliminate some of those barriers to where if schools choose not to implement during the day, because of the timeframe that some of these clubs may require, what are we doing to do that to create more access for more students?
I don't know that I have any answer to that, right? We're kind of working through that. We don't have access to transportation, so we're trying, we're just trying to kind of get them engaged during the day.
Okay. Okay. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you for paying attention to us here tonight. I'm going to report on the secondary data. So, there we go. So here's the data that we have for our secondary. If you look at that across the board for secondary schools, that's about 63% of our students total at secondary level are involved right now. And again, I want to reiterate, like Dr. Kenny did, that this is our benchmark year. And so this is our first start with that data. So you can take a look at that for a second. And to preempt a question, you look at Bernard Campbell's percentage, Board Member Sparks, it's the same question. They've instituted, I believe, a monthly during their advisory timeframe, a club program, and all their kids have a club to go to, and they sign up for teacher sponsor, a variety of clubs. I can't even keep track of all the different opportunities that there are for kids during the day. Bernard Campbell, the other schools have not elected to do that at this time. They're using their advisory time for interventions and some other things during that time. But you can see that. So if you take that outlier out, we're still over 60% of our students at the secondary level are currently involved. You can see our data. I think the data that we put in here was the way that what you were talking about. And so you do see the percentage of the students in that subgroup that are, of the students who are actually in that subgroup that are involved. And just kind of some final thoughts. Like I said, benchmark year, this is just first semester data. In the secondary level, we still have our spring activities that are coming up. So we still have a number of kids who may haven't made this list that are going to be signing up for things this spring as that comes around. I think you, due to your generosity, we were able to start a D-League program at the middle level. At one point, I think, we have like 70-some-odd additional teams at the middle level than what we had a year ago. So if we'd used last year's benchmark data, it looks a lot different this year because of the expanded opportunities that we have for our middle school kids this year. You can also see on the presentation that we've started sixth grade cross country and wrestling, so we're getting those youngest kids in middle school involved in things. And there was huge turnout for those activities. And then we've expanded football to include seventh grade. One of the things that you asked for that's going to help us move forward is we've created a database in Power School, and we've asked our club sponsors, as they roster kids, to enter that into Power School, so we can pull that data pretty frequently. So we've asked them to fill that out. Diane Sherman hats off to her. She came up with that. It wasn't easy, come up with a system to track all of that in Power School. So we've got that rolling. The students that you see on this list have been, have at least been on the roster. So they made it to one meeting. It's hard to track if they eventually, for some of those clubs, that's not real strict attendance policies, some of them may have tracked out of it. But these kids were rostered and participated enough to make it onto a list. I'd be remiss if I didn't mention the activities and athletics strategic plan that many of you are involved in. This activity, this CSEP goal lines up with the first two focus areas of the activities plan, which is focus area number one, which is marketing and trying to expand our activities, and focus area number two, which is K-12 development of programs.
Dr. Potts, we have a couple of questions. Dr. Buck, did you want to?
I just want to share why this would be in a CSEP, and why this is an important metric. One of the highest correlates to successful career is that you participate in two or more co- or extracurricular activities in high school sometime in your career. So you have four years to do so. And the thought and the research behind it, and it really came out of redefining Ready House Chicago, the thought is, when I was on the football offensive line, or the next kid was in the band, I have an employer. I have a head coach. I have a band director. But I also have, they set goals, and I got to live within those goals. I can set my own goals, but they better be congruent. I learned how to be an employee. I learned how to work with my fellow linemen, all right? And my, so I have interdependence. My success depends on their, and their success depends on me. And so I need to support them. So you learn all these work-life skills that you're not going to learn in algebra class. You know, algebra class is very important, but these are also very important. So in order to help build the culture of every kid participating in two or more co- or extracurricular activities, or backtracking in elementary, try to build the culture of you go to school, but you also participate in these other things. And the added benefit is, obviously, if you participate, you feel more of a sense of belonging. If you feel more sense of belonging, you end up attending to your academics at a higher rate. So it has cursory benefits as well. But I just want to put out, there's actually research of why we're talking about this. It's really focused around secondary and what that means then later as an adult, as you work in a career.
Board Member Eslick?
So on that, as we think about, when I think about students and student engagement and making sure that our students feel like they're included and feel like they belong, I automatically think of the students that might have the most struggle in school, like any of your students that might have, be on IEPs, struggling academically, students with disabilities. I'm kind of curious, what kind of, how difficult would it be, two-part question, can we get data that relates to students on IEPs that are engaged in extracurriculars, students who might be on free and reduced lunch status? That one might be trickier. I don't know if that's possible to correlate it without pulling that out. But that sort of data for the students that might be more at risk of not feeling like they're included with their peers, because those are kind of the kids I think of. Are we missing those kids that already have something that makes it more difficult for them to feel like they belong?
For sure. We can pull that data for the next time we report. Also, I would be remiss if I didn't mention, Dr. Mathis and her team have worked really hard to create opportunities. I think you all know, the opportunity that we had in the fall for students to be participating. And I think those students are counted in this data to include that. But that would be important to know, because a lot of our students with special needs do participate. But also, we need to make sure that we're making an effort to get them included. I agree with you. Thank you.
Yeah, thank you. I would like to see those numbers. I'm glad we can do that. Appreciate that.
Board Member Sparks?
To, first, Dr. Buck, I appreciate your comments, because I was going to pull that point out, so I appreciate that. And then to Board Member Eslick's point, I also know that there could be economic barriers that is created, transportation, all those other things. So I think that that could also help. If like free and reduced lunch could also be part of that data of who these students are, of participation. This is an ask. I appreciate the report. Love the report. When we are presenting our benchmarks, I would love to see us also as a district to present goals, because then what that would help us to do is, it'll challenge us, but also force us to have an action plan on closing those gaps, and also giving the board an idea of where our goals are. And so I appreciate to see where we are, but I also would like to see what our goals are.
So pull out the CSEP goals and put them in the slide as well.
Yes, but also what are our goals to, where do we want our kids to be? And actually show that on the graph, so that we can, just even from a visual standpoint, see, we're getting closer. No, we're not getting closer.
Great questions. Any other, any other questions, board members? All right. Well, thank you so much, Dr. Potts, Dr. Kenny, Dr. Barger. Love the update to help us with that monthly update of where we're going in the areas that we have some additional work on. Thank you so much. All right. We'll move on to item 4.01, our public comments. Or Board Member Murdock?
For public comment tonight, we appreciate your attendance and your willingness to speak to the board. Please remember that while this is a public meeting, this part of the meeting does not contemplate a conversation between speakers and board members. The board does not respond to public comments during the meeting, but may ask clarifying questions. Your comments will be noted by the board, and if appropriate, we will direct the subject to the administrators who are responsible for that particular subject matter. Pursuant to Board Policy BDDH, we will be limiting all comments to no more than 10 people with a limit of three minutes each. Your allotted three minutes will be counted down on the screen. We ask that you conclude your comments when the timer expires. Only those who have signed up prior to the meeting will be allowed to address the board. Please refrain from using the names of any students, staff, in your remarks. Remain respectful and ensure your comments pertain to district operations. We also ask all audience members to remain respectful. Pursuant to Board Policy BDDG, profane language or comments that constitute a threat to the safety of others is prohibited. Lastly, when your name is called, please go to the podium. Clearly state your name and the organization you represent, if any.
All right. Thank you. And our first speaker tonight is Jacqueline Clark.
Good evening. My name is Jacqueline Clark, former vice president of this board, and I represent the third generation of four taxpayers here in the school district. Dr. Buck, I concur with you that losing talented staff and teachers is always tragic, and we lost some during my tenure. Tonight, I'm here to congratulate Megan, our good friend, who is now county legislator for earning her MSBA distinguished certification. It was lonely being the first and only distinguished certificate owner for the last few years, and I could not be more proud of her hard work in understanding the role of governance as a board member. From the first moment I met her, I knew that she was a leader. Congratulations, Megan. We board members must model continuous learning as board members. Sadly, though, one of the worst decisions the Lee Summit R7 board made in 2018 was to no longer require public comment to be confined to topics on the board agenda. I voted against the change, and I'm proud to stand here tonight and remind folks of the wisdom I shared then. When you try to amend this in the future, it won't go well. Today, I feel like a prophet in my own land. These school board meetings are held in public, but are not public forums. Voters elect directors to lead districts, and they govern through a board model, not a legislative model. They are volunteers and receive no compensation. The board is different, and it does not carry legislative responsibilities. And again, they're unpaid volunteers. What the citizens of the LSR 7 district hear during public comment has become a veritable parade of jabronis. Again, parade of jabronis. It feels a lot like we've returned to the 1970s Lee Summit, when junior high talent show dance routines were criticized as risque. No caring adult in the LSR 7 school district wants to expose children to inappropriate materials on any topic. They know that if they do, the only things that will be missing at a board meeting in the future will be pitchforks and lit torches. It is 2023. Book banning is so last millennium. A curious child can access what a parent prohibits. There's this thing called the internet in most public places and private homes, where people and even kids explore the world. There's no putting that genie back in the bottle, and my 80-year-old-plus parents agree 100%. Maybe instead of bashing caring adults in this district, we should carve a new path during the next 38 days. The most sacred week in the liturgical year in Christianity is Holy Week, and our board election is on April 4th that falls that week. Regardless of your beliefs, let's give up bigotry, judgment, misogyny, hatred, bias, and divisiveness. Love God, love your neighbor, love all kids.
Thank you, Jackie. Our next speaker will be Liz Jeffries.
Good evening. Can you hear me? Okay. Oh, I have to push it? Okay. Do you push or don't push? Okay. All right. Hi. I'm Liz Jeffries. I'm a resident parent, and most importantly, I'm a veteran teacher in the district. I'm here tonight because your vote denied me the opportunity to visit with you in a more private setting to discuss this very personal matter. I'm here tonight doing something that is extremely difficult, speaking publicly, to share with you in our community a discrepancy in what you communicate is happening and what is really happening within the district. It's been nearly a year since I filed a grievance with the Human Resources Department regarding the Phase 2 salary adjustment. I'm unsure whether you were given all the information regarding my situation, and if you were, did you have ample time to go through it all before you voted to deny me the opportunity to have a hearing? When I came to the district, I was granted two years less than my years of experience on the salary schedule due to district policy at that time. However, I caught up when the district adopted the EMS schedule. After teachers' salaries were then frozen three times in the span of five years, I fell behind again, despite new hires being given their full year's experience on the schedule when we were frozen. Though Phase 2 promised to get me back on step- Though Phase 2 promised to get me back on step, I was told I do not qualify. This is why I filed the grievance and was absolutely deflated with each step of the process that was denied. Repeatedly, the district advertised to the Lee Summit community that all teachers would be made whole and on step after implementation of Phases 1 and 2. Nowhere in the multiple district communications to staff in the community was Board Policy GCBA stated as part of the qualifications for a teacher to be deemed eligible. In fact, the district continues to be unable to clearly define what eligible means for each of us. Even your agenda item on March 17th, 2022, when you approved the implementation of Phase 2, did not include anything about GCBA. I'm not asking for anything special, I'm just asking for what is guaranteed to me per your, the board adopted Phase 2 policy. I recently discovered a lawsuit filed against the district that states Board Policy GCBA requires the adoption of guidelines for placement and movement on the salary schedule. However, the district had never adopted such guidelines. In at least one of my grievance denial letters, I was told GCBA has not been waived, yet there are no clear guidelines within GCBA that would prevent us receiving our Phase 2 salary adjustment. The board can make this right. Today, I received a district publication explaining the district's goal of the levy transfer on the upcoming ballot. The goal is to move funds around so the district is allowed to, and I quote, "increase staff compensation as part of the district's goal of recruiting and retaining quality staff." On April 4th, our community will consider whether or not to approve this transfer of funds before the election continues. Or election occurs, the community needs to know that not all of our veteran teachers are being paid as we were promised we would be with the adoption of Phase 2 last spring. The promise that teachers whose years' experience don't match their salary step placement would be made whole by Phases 1 and 2. If retaining quality teachers truly is a priority, why hasn't this been corrected for nearly a year? If you're not honoring your promises of Phase 2, how can Lee Summit voters trust you to properly utilize levy funds as the district has stated? This board has the power to do exactly what you promised to do. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Liz. Next we'll have, next we'll have Ashley Alshewish.
Recently, I had a bad day. Upon arriving to work, I received an email from one of my superiors asking me to help him run an errand. He asked me to purchase him some gift cards and get them back to him. It wasn't until I found myself at a grocery store telling him sorry they didn't have the Apple brand that he requested, that he responded, "Don't worry, the Google Play ones will work just as well, and don't forget to pull the gray tape off the back and send me a picture before you buy them," that I realized I had been completely scammed. When I returned back to the office, I learned that every other assistant had received the exact same email, and with much better intuition than what I had, they did not engage. For just a moment, I want you to consider that what if these third-party consultants are just like that robot that I was talking to, trying to get our school district's money? For just a moment, let's pretend that LSR 7 is one big house, and every member of this community lives in it. And the equivalent of keeping the lights on means focusing on the achievement gap and literacy rates and math proficiency. I don't have to tell you that the students that are hurt the worst in these numbers are minority students. So if we are one big house and we've hired someone to help us with these very category of students, minority students that need more equitable resources, then it's time to say, "No, thank you, consultants. You haven't done your job, and our community has got it from here." Just last month, at the board meeting, we heard district leaders admit that there are other options that you could look to and still meet your CSIP and Missouri standards. Last month, we also heard a wise board member question J.E. Dunn on the accountability of finishing a project on time. I'm ready to see some of those same accountability questions directed at vendors like Panorama, Dignity Consultants, Core Collaborative, EEC, et cetera. We also heard board members discussing requests that they've had of companies like Panorama, and Panorama being unable to deliver simple interface changes. LSR 7, please do not forget that you are the customer and you dictate the terms of your own contract. You have the opportunity to be a leader in this state and walk away from large consultants that are not in the business for our kids. Imagine if other school districts followed that lead. Remember, if we're one big family living in this house, and if the house falls down, if the school falls down, then our community falls down. Parents in this community, I am begging you. Let's show our children that we know how to set our differences aside and show them how we know how to work together. Let's show them the reasons why we chose Lee Summit instead of finding reasons to fight with one another. We're better than that. Board members, please, I am begging you. Our tax dollars are being left outside getting rained on while our students are being left behind, and even those third-party results show that. The results they've produced are pathetic, and they are not an accurate representation of our district. Please have better intuition than what I myself had. I am not smarter than any of you, and there's a reason why you're elected to be good stewards of our tax dollars. Please look again to local resources. Let's redefine equity and redefine the approach. We can come together and we can be better.
Thank you, Ashley. Our next speaker will be Rachel Rooney.
I am not very practiced at using microphones. I am an LSR 7 parent. My oldest child is an LSR 7 graduate, currently attending Mizzou, and my youngest son is a sophomore at Lee Summit High School. I hate public speaking, so I'm going to try and keep this short. I am here because last month, a friend forwarded to me a list of books that a local parent group wanted removed from our school libraries. Included were instructions on how to file a formal request for reconsideration and detailed notes on each of the titles. I am here because I want to speak for the books. Books are tools for understanding complex issues. Young people deserve to see themselves reflected in libraries' books. Parents should not be making decisions for other people's children. I trust our school librarians to stock our libraries with age-appropriate books. Libraries should have a book for every reader, but that does not mean that every book will be appropriate for each person. Sorry, that makes sense. Before I could drive, I got 90% of the books that I read from my school library. Books helped me make sense of my world, see things through other people's eyes, and have helped me through some difficult times. I want to finish with an anecdote from my job. I work at the public library, and last year, a teenage girl came in to pick up her holds. She went to the shelf and brought her stack of books up to the desk and said, "I want to check these ones out, and this one, my mom said I cannot read, so I'd like you to put it back for me." And I said, "Great, I'd be happy to do that." And she went home with just the books that her mom had approved. And I believe that this is how the process should work, and that we should be talking to our kids about what we want them to read and what they are reading. Thank you.
Thank you, Rachel. Next, we'll have Michelle Barnes. Do we have Michelle Barnes here? Okay, we'll move on, please, to Regina Garrett.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Regina Garrett. I'm a 14-year resident here in Lee Summit. I have two young children in the LSR 7 school district. I'm speaking tonight as a parent, a concerned parent. Now, I wasn't really going to speak on the books, but I've been hearing a lot of comments tonight on them. I believe that, that the school books should be restricted because the kids have restrictions on their, on their Chromebooks. So I don't know what the difference is. I mean, we don't allow pornography. We don't allow certain sites for them to have access to on their Chromebooks. So why? Why are we putting it in the school libraries? I understand there are some parents that are for this book. I think that it's available because I've seen it front and center at the public library. So they do have it available there. They can get it on Amazon. I've seen it there. I, I, I don't understand why it's so important that this is an educational tool for our children, when there are plenty of studies that show that pornography can mentally, it, it can be mentally hurtful for children or for anyone. So if it's not really educational and it's more about the sex that is put in these books, sure, parents have that right. I don't want to take a right from any parent to have access to these books. That's your choice. It's your home, it's your child, it's your choice. I don't want my children to have access to it. And I'm sorry, but slapping on a red sticker on the book and then notifying parents afterwards is not a good solution. I don't want my child to have access to this book and then be notified later after the fact. I want to know beforehand. I would rather it be in the hands of a counselor. Let a counselor check it out to a book, to a child, and let them call the parent and ask them if they would like their child, or their child to have access to the book. It can be monitored that way. We can see who's checking it out, how many times are they checking it out? Because believe me, if a child has access to check it out, believe me, they're going to pass it to their friends. Maybe somebody who's, who's child or parent doesn't want their child to have the book. So I believe that we need to come up with a better way. This book is already in our school. I understand it's not going to go away, but we could probably have it here with restriction of some kind. And I would like to see that happen. Thank you.
Thank you, Regina. We'll now move on to Dr. Camille Johnson.
Good evening. My name is Camille Johnson, a concerned parent and mother of a student in the Lee Summit School District. I would like to say thank you to the board for allowing me this space to speak, and for the unpaid hours all of you dedicate to move our school district forward and navigate it through trying times. It is clear that the topic of books in our school's libraries has caused a lot of community consternation. This issue has divided our community at a time when unity is needed more than ever. Both sides have legitimate concerns, and both sides deserve a seat at the table to have their concerns addressed. As a school district, it is imperative that parent and community concerns be addressed in a timely and appropriate manner. And it is the community's responsibility to present grievances to the Board of Education in a manner that is civil, respectful, and in good faith. We all want what is best for our children. We all desire to place our kids in environments that are safe, inclusive, and loving. The ongoing controversy over books has called into question whether or not our schools represent this type of environment for all students. I believe they do, but I am also willing to admit the fears some parents have, and are absolutely valid. It is time for the Board of Education and the community to work together to create policies that honor the rights of parents while protecting the free speech and the freedom of expression rights of authors, teachers, librarians, and families, who wish to provide their children with the broadest array of information available to ensure academic rigor and representation in literature of people of all races, backgrounds, cultures, and orientations. I believe in our community. I believe we are strong. I believe that we have never been as divided as the loudest talkers and the angriest doomsayers. What have you believed? The sky is not falling, the end is not near. We are experiencing a moment like many moments before the required calm patience, compromise, and perseverance to move forward. I challenge every person in this room, those watching at home, and anyone who may ever hear these words, to humbly consider that there is a world of knowledge that today you do not know, that there are points of view that you have never considered, and that there is information that you don't even know you don't know yet. I challenge all of us to bring humility with us into these discussions about book policies in our school district and commit to providing more than simple passion and indignation to the discourse. But add to it compassion, dignity, and a willingness to learn more than we know today. Lastly, I would like to offer my serious condolences to all of those who have lost a family member in the Lee Summit School District. I want to say that the community and thoughts and prayers are with you, and we stand united and willing to help in this tremendous time of loss. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Johnson. Next, we have Madison Grubbs.
Hello, my name is Madison Grubbs. I've spoken a few other times. I might be a child, but I have a voice that needs to be heard. At a young age, we are told when there is a problem we can't solve to go to a trustworthy adult and ask for help. But sometimes the students are pushed aside and silenced. There was a little girl that did whatever she could to get help, but she was ignored every time. She still asks for help, but this time not for her, but others struggling like she did. That little girl is me. Help is one of the easiest yet hardest things to say. Asking for help is one of the most difficult, most courageous thing you can do. When kids have a problem at school, they might go to a teacher or counselor. But what if the problem doesn't get solved? After, often the ones who continue to ask for help are silenced. Equity efforts in our district say that dignity is being worthy to belong, and that belonging is measured by those around you. One of the worst thing, things a child can believe is that their worth is defined by people around them. What if those people around them think that they are worthless? Do you really want your children coming home from school believing they are worthless? It's messages like this that can lead to depression and suicide. For the last two years, Lee Summit Police Crisis Intervention Team responded to four complete suicides by juveniles. Is this the outcome you want for your children? Worth, we all have it, no matter what anyone says. We exist, so therefore we have value and worth. Why can't that be the messages in our schools and community? I challenge you to make changes in our schools to ensure that all kids are able to have a future. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Madison. And now we have David Grady. David Grady?
Good evening. My name is David Grady, and I appreciate you taking the time to listen to me tonight, each of you members of the board, and President Campbell, Dr. Buck. Tonight, I'd just like to talk to you a little bit about some of the experience we have. The saying up, we prepare each student for success in life. I like to think, what, how do we define success? Is it being the richest? Is it being the best-looking? Is it being the smartest? I don't know. I think we would all define success in a different way. And my thought, and I am a college educator, so I work with students a lot. I work with a lot of high school students who come to me on the dual enrollment program. But my thought when it comes to success is, what's best for this student? What's best for this student? And I don't think we can make a, a cookie cutter thing and say, "This is best for all students." They go to a four-year school, they get a degree, this many go on and get a master's, this many go on and get a doctorate. I think for each person, it's different. I was looking at some of the statistics through our apprenticeship department where I teach, and out of all the students that go to four-year schools, only 64% graduate, and that's in six years, not four. So it seems to me a lot of young people are going to school thinking, "I've got to go get a four-year degree," and it's not right for them. So what I would like to do is see us as a district expand our opportunities for other things. If a student is right for four-year college, I want to do everything we can to help them get that education. If they're going on and be a master's and a doctorate, I want to do everything we can to, to support that. What I don't like is I see students come to my program and they say, "Well, I went to four-year college, I got this degree or that degree, and I can't get a job, I hate doing it. So now I'm here to learn something new that I really like to do." What I would like to do is take those a little bit more than one out of three that don't graduate, and let's try to focus them early on on something they really like, something they're going to enjoy doing. Because to me, success is not about having the best job that pays the most money, it's about doing what you love. I've done what I love most of my life, so when I go to work, I enjoy it. I just enjoy it. Actually, teaching's been the best job I ever had, I have to say, and I've only been doing that for 10 years. But I'm a tool and die maker by trade. I work with my hands. I just really enjoy it. And what I would like to see us do is mentor the kids from early ages. I know we've got the program where we send the trailer out to the elementary schools. I think that's fantastic. Let them get their hands on things and try stuff out. Running out of time. Summit technology is great, but I notice everything there seems to be white collar. I'd like to see us focus on gold collar. Okay? Thank you for your time.
Thank you, David. All right. Now we'll move on to item 5.01, our board reports and meetings attended. And I think Board Member Foley will start at your end of the dais.
Thank you. This past month, Board Member Eslick and I had school
This past month, Board Member Eslic and I had school visits at Longview Farm Elementary, Hawthorne Hill Elementary, and Summit Technology Academy. I attended the CSD-GKC Business Meeting and Legislative Appreciation Dinner, where I was able to connect with our local legislators, state senators, and state representatives to talk about issues facing our district, one of them being the potential landfill going in very close proximity to an elementary school, and reiterated their invitation to the upcoming LSR-7 Legislative Breakfast. At the Parents of Struggling Readers Meeting, I got to meet additional parents that have students in our district that have struggled with reading. I'm glad to see the increased awareness and partnerships to really serve all students. Literacy is so important to success in life. To truly prepare students, we need to do everything we can to equip them with the foundational tools that they need to be able to succeed as a reader. The Parents of Struggling Readers Team has created a website with resources for parents, including a terms glossary, videos, dyslexia characteristics, and additional resources. And that link should be uploaded to the Board Doc's agenda and available if any of you guys would like to visit it for more information. Thank you.
All right. I think we'll go then to Board Member Sparks.
I first would like to acknowledge that I also attended the Struggling Readers Group. Dr. Flack, he spearheads that, and we're gonna miss him. That was kinda announced and talked about. But we are a district that is committed to all of our students. And there are interventions and things that we have in place, but we do have room of opportunity. And I think we, as a district, have acknowledged that, but I also think we need to acknowledge the success. With being able to, one of the things that was talked about was the fact that we have our teachers that are getting certified in letters. That is a success, the science of reading and being able to make sure that we have teachers of all grade levels, starting in our elementary. But then also being able to expand. And so I agree, we're a district of great teachers, but then also we're a district that is really trying to meet the needs of all of our students. I also attended the, did not attend the Policy Committee meeting, but I did give notice of that. I did attend the Team Lee Summit meeting. We had a work session, so we kinda got to hear kinda what's going on there. And we'll be looking forward to a recommendation on the, is that announced? On the 5th of April for that recommendation. And then also today, I was at Team Lee Summit North for their Black History Program. They did a wonderful job, and I also was supposed to be at Lee Summit High School for their Black History Program. But go Chiefs! We won the Super Bowl, was home Super Bowl champs, and so they had to postpone it because we had our red day, and that is going to happen on the 28th. And so I will be attending that for that Black History Program. That is the end of my report.
Thank you, Board Member Sparks. Board Member Murdock?
Just a couple of things. Number one, I appreciated the joint meeting with the City of Lee Summit that we did on the 24th of January. They continue to be an excellent partner with us on many different issues, and so I did appreciate that. Outside of that, I did want to obviously say thank you to the rest of you up here for the special session that we had after that particular meeting, where we did pass a resolution to oppose the landfill. I do need to, full transparency, I'm Assistant City Manager for Raymore, and we are right in the thick of that going on right now. And if anybody is not aware of that particular issue, that is a 270-acre proposed landfill, point one mile from Summit Point Elementary School. So my soapbox tonight is, there is legislation in the Missouri House, House Bill 909. If you know legislators and want some activities, contact them. It's the Representatives, Senators, their Senate Bill 590, which is its sister bill. But I was telling my wife the other day, in these, I would argue, pretty darn partisan times, this bill now has 20 sponsors, 11 Republicans, nine Democrats. It is the most bipartisan bill going in the state legislature right now. So if you feel inclined, it's not about being opposed to a landfill. It's about being opposed to a landfill sitting next to an elementary school and just about 40,000 residents across Lee Summit, Raymore, Grandview, and Southern Kansas City. So if you have any questions about that, obviously you can come and see me. But I appreciate our board passing that resolution. We joined with the City of Lee Summit, the City of Raymore, Raypek School District, Grandview School District, the City of Grandview, Cass County Commission, the South Metro Fire District are all opposed to this. But I will tell you, the developer put drilling equipment on the land today. So I, we gotta keep up the efforts. Thanks.
Thank you, Board Member Murdock. Board Member Eslic?
Thank you. Most of the things that I have attended were already mentioned, so I will just go through by exception. I attended the Lee Summit Ed Foundation Board of Directors Meeting this, excuse me, this week. Just a little update from that, as most of you know who have kids in the district, we just completed the Major Saber Campaign, so I hope everybody got their Major Saber card. The Taste of Lee Summit is next Saturday, March 4th. I believe you can still buy tickets, so by all means, continue to support that. It's 13 restaurants, I believe? 14. One signed on, okay. So 14 restaurants, okay. Additionally, the Ed Foundation just closed their scholarship application on February 10th, and they had 570 applications. So that's amazing. That Scholarship Review Committee is gonna work through those applications starting on March 6th. So I have no idea how long it takes to go through that many applications, but I'm sure that will be a lengthy process. Peak Grant applications are open and actually due by tomorrow, so short window from my announcement now, but I'm sure most people are already aware. And the next meeting for the Ed Foundation is gonna be March 21st. And on the heels of several of the board members in their updates talking about the Struggling Readers Group, I did attend that meeting as well. But as it relates to our Board Policy Committee meeting that we had just a couple of weeks ago, we did have a conversation during that time, because during our Board Policy Committee meeting this time around, we are reviewing the I Series, which, for everyone else's benefit, are the policies on academics and curriculum development. So most of the review was fairly routine with some recommended updates to the policies that reflect changes to Missouri statutes. But one of the topics that I brought up was that I made a request of our leadership to implement specific language in our policies that reflect a focus on literacy. So I'll read you the language that I introduced just as a starting point to have our team kind of have a conversation about this. My recommended language was, "It is this district's goal to equip every student with the tools to become proficient in literacy by employing the most relevant instructional methods to accomplish this in the classroom. Whole-classroom instruction in the areas of literacy will be founded in the science of reading, structured literacy, with systematic instruction in phonemic awareness, phonics, spelling, vocabulary development, reading fluency, and comprehension. An evidence-based curriculum will be adopted to achieve these objectives." I made my own suggestions to this policy, but of course, ultimately, it will be the board's duty to have that conversation. But I kind of suggested some policy opportunities where maybe this could be inserted. But I wanted to start the conversation because we've had so many conversations as board attendees in various groups, and literacy being so important to this district. We already implement structured literacy programs in many of our, in our schools. Having it in policy, I feel like bringing that to the table for the board to consider is an opportunity for us to really solidify and codify that that's going to be the basis. That's what we support as a board, and it allows the district to build upon that as a focus. So that was my suggestion, and I really look forward to hearing what our, our team comes back with with the next committee meeting. So that's, you know, a significant update that I wanted to bring to the board that came out of that Policy Committee meeting. So if you have any questions about that now or later, please let me know. Thank you.
Great, thank you. Now moving to Vice President Fritchie.
Thank you, President Campbell. I think the one I, the team meeting this last month that I'd really like to focus on is Team Lee Summit. This month, Team Lee Summit, well, Team Lee Summit focused its January the 26th and the February 9th meetings, the last two meetings, on developing salary recommendations for our staff. And that encompassed the results of the proposed levy transfer on April the 4th, 2023 ballot. This work included a comprehensive review of metro-wide salary data. So we were comparing to all these other school districts in the metro area and developing, at the time, developing multiple possible salary scenarios for Team Lee Summit's consideration. Nathan Holder, our Chief Financial Officer for the district, provided updated information on the operating revenue available to Team Lee Summit this year to allocate for salary recommendations with and without the additional operating revenue generated by a successful passage of the levy transfer on April the 4th. So all of that information was put on the table for Team Lee Summit to examine. Team Lee Summit discussions included high vacancy positions in LSR-7, as well as positions in the bottom third in area district salary surveys. It included Board Policy GCBA and its impact on staff placement on the salary schedule. It included FY24 salary scenarios that meet LSR-7 recruitment and retention needs. And so our next meeting for Team Lee Summit will be March the 9th. Those are very intense meetings. They are eight-hour meetings, of which we have about six of those during the school year of a, of a team, of a comprehensive team of folks from all around the school district and all the different employee groups that meet together to examine all of those issues and then bring a recommendation to the board. So they will prepare that and will then present it to the board. In addition to Team Lee Summit in the last month, I attended on January 24th the Lee Summit Educational Foundation Advisory Board Meeting, and I appreciate Board Member Eslic being on the actual board. And she brought up Team Lee Summit, which I just wanted to put an additional plug in there. Tickets are $75, and some of you may say, that's a lot of money to pay $75 for a ticket. But it's an evening well worthwhile. $75, and that money goes toward a good cause, and that's our Educational Foundation's support of all of our teachers in the classrooms, classroom grants, and all of that that helps our students in our schools. So I hope we can count on a lot of you getting out there and buying your tickets. We have 550 tickets already purchased, and we can only take a mass, maximum of 600. So we've really only got like 50 tickets left. So that's awesome. And 14 fantastic restaurants, a lot of our great standbys, but we also have some new ones this year. I just got Gusto Coffee, and that's why it's 14. So we've got some great coffee and some desserts coming too from them. I'm on the restaurant committee for that. And as far as scholarships, yes, it takes a really long time to read those scholarships, because I read the teacher scholarship every year. So anyway. The 24th, Ryan Murdock mentioned the Joint City Council and the School Board Meeting, and that was a fantastic meeting. It was great to be able to sit down with our city council members and our mayor and just share and learn more about what each group is doing and how we can work together, and that's fantastic. Nobody mentioned Mayor's Character Breakfast. That was on January 26th, sponsored by Lee Summit Cares. But the Mayor's Character Breakfast, in which we honored many of our very admirable people in our community who demonstrate those character traits in our community. So thanks to each of those folks. And Lee Summit Cares for sponsoring that. I think it was Board Member Foley mentioned cooperating school districts of Greater Kansas City and talking to our legislators. It was great to have them sitting right there at the table with us, so we could talk about the landfill, so we could talk about issues that impact our district, and have them genuinely listen to us. And that was, that was fantastic. We really appreciated having them there. Of course, we had our board leadership meeting with Dr. Campbell, uh, Dr. Campbell, not Dr. Campbell! President Campbell! I'm used, I'm used to saying Dr. Campbell, because Dr. Campbell was the superintendent when I went to Lee Summit High School. No, but Dr. Buck, President Campbell. And anyway, we have some good discussions there. And then, of course, Dr. Buck mentioned February 8th, the 100 People Who Care Event. That was really kind of his and Carl Chennery's brainchild, but that was a fantastic event. So positive for our community, that really supports the nonprofits and got everybody out to understand what all of our nonprofits do to help make the Lee Summit community be a great place to live. So thank you, thank you, thank you, thank you.
That was great. And I'll just highlight a couple of things, but I do want to point out, because it's mentioned in almost everybody's Board Committee reports, where the talk about our partnerships that we build. And, you know, Dr. Buck, you're inventive in thinking about new things where we can get partnerships and we can engage our community in our buildings, in our schools. And I appreciate you setting this event up for the very first year, kind of the inaugural event. And you've done that with many different opportunities with our community as well. So with that, appreciated so much our legislators joining us that evening, and that was great conversation. Also appreciate the work that, and the partnerships that we have with the City of Lee Summit, both that joint meeting, which was fantastic, as well as I got to sit in on the City of Lee Summit Governance Committee, and I don't often get to sit in on that. But it was great to just hear legislators there as well, presenting information and sharing information, and just the different leaders across our city having good conversations and building partnerships as well. So that was very exciting. I attended my very first Chamber Gala, and that was an amazing night and just so amazing to live in a community where so many business people work so closely together, building each other up and building partnerships there as well. And just to be a part of that from a school district standpoint is, is really an honor. So excited to do that. Also, I attended the Struggling Readers and love that committee and the continued work. I also went to the Lee Summit Economic Development Council Luncheon, where they talked in depth about their strategic plan and honored and partnered with us as a, as a part of that strategic plan, as well as the Lee Summit Workforce Alliance Committee, and heard great updates. And, you know, just kudos, I think I say this often, I'll say it again tonight. Shannon Booth and her team are just doing a phenomenal job and were recognized by so many business leaders in that group. But if you have a business and you want to get engaged, that's an awesome group to get engaged and involved with, because that is helping, with Dr. Bonnison as well, that is helping us build those career pipelines. Whether students want to go to college, whether students want to just be career-ready, that is the connection, the glue of helping us engage with our businesses to really build those pipelines for our students. And I will share, there was one specific, specific student that was called out in that meeting, and just the kudos of their engagement and involvement in that internship. I was so proud to be there from a school district standpoint and hear the amazing work of this student out in the business world and just how hard they were working and representing our district as well. So I'm very excited about our students. I want to say thank you again, Shannon, to you and, and all of your team, and Dr. Bonnison, you as well. You all do amazing work for our students. So thank you. All right. So moving on now to our Finance Committee Report, Board Member Eslic.
Okay, thank you. So this month, we reviewed our less than $15,000 contracts. There's nothing super significant to really discuss in there, so I will move on to some of our larger contracts, over $15,000. So going through this list, first, we are going to be approving the annual fuel purchase, which this is the same company that we have been using this past year or more, and this company supplies our diesel and unleaded fuel to the district. So this company's bid was competitive, a little bit under the second bid. So Carter Energy is the contract that is up for approval this evening. Second is Sports Graphics Incorporated, Incorporated Contract, and this is a contract to provide just standard dugout padding for our new baseball and softball complex over, for Lee Summit High School. These were competitive bids, so we're going with the lowest bidder, and that vendor contract is up for approval. The next couple of contracts, these are three contracts for Converge One, and these contracts are for networking equipment and licensing. And all of these bids fell with, fell under, into, excuse me, words, I'm struggling, fell into our E-Rate Program, which with that E-Rate Program, we anticipate that we will get a 40% rebate. It's a federal program, so when we, when we initially discussed these contracts during our Finance Committee meeting, some of the questions that I had were related to why we have so few bidders. bidders, because that's always a question anytime we're trying to get competitive pricing. And so, the E-Rate Program, like many government programs, does make it a little bit difficult to get that rebate because it's kind of a cumbersome process. So, that ends up with some limited amount of bidders that want to provide pricing. So, that's kind of the result there, and I just share that with the board because it was a question that I had, so naturally, it might be something that others may consider as well. But I felt very comfortable hearing from our Technology Department that they felt the bids were very competitive and that we were also going to get that 40% rebate back. So, I mean, that's a significant savings. So, I feel very comfortable about those contracts, and I feel like our team did a really great job explaining that and also doing their due diligence. Moving on. Excuse me. Okay. For our facilities contracts, we had a couple of bids out there for restaurant supply, through index restaurant supply for some walk-in freezers and coolers, and we had three bids on that, I believe, and we'll be going with the lowest bidder, and that was a pretty significant savings. So, great job to our team soliciting competitive bids on those projects as well. We, upcoming will be also up for approval for a budget, another budget amendment. This is our second budget amendment for the FY23 budget. And as we reviewed this in the explanation of why we are receiving this amendment, this change is due to revenue adjustment increases that are due to some grants that we were awarded and some better-than-expected investment interest income. As you know, with the inflationary environment, one of the benefits of that is that we actually get a better return on some of our investments, which is a good thing. So, this budget amendment has to do with an increased expected income. There is a correlating increase in expenditure as well, so really, it's a net of zero, but it does change the values, so that budget amendment is up for approval this evening as well. And we will be approving a transfer this evening of $4,270,969.24 to the General Fund, from the General Fund to the Special Revenue Fund. And that is it for my update unless anyone has any questions.
I don't believe we have any questions.
Okay. Well, then, I move to, sorry, is that you?
No, no, it's you.
Okay. Okay, okay, sorry. I moved to approve the transfer of $4,270,969.24 from the General Fund to the Special Revenue Fund.
Second. All right, we have a motion and a second. Do we have any discussion? All right, then we'll move forward with a vote. All in favor, raise your right hand and say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously, so now we'll move on to Item 6.03.
Okay, I don't have any, does anybody have any questions? Because I was not going to talk on this point.
Do you want to move?
Oh, I just, oh, okay. I was just, sorry.
No worries, no worries.
I moved to approve the Treasurer's Report and the Payment of the Bills.
All right, aye second. All right, we have a motion and a second. Do we have any discussion on this?
Paying bills is good.
All right. All right, we'll move to vote. We'll move to vote. All those in favor, raise your right hand and say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously. And now, we'll move to Item 6.04. Yeah, do we want to have the motion? All right, then that's fine. Can we get a motion?
I recommend the board approve the second budget amendment for fiscal year 23 budget as presented.
Do we have a second?
Second.
All right, we have a couple of seconds. And Mr. Nathan, do you, Mr. Holder, do you want to come up? Do we have any discussion or questions? I do, just want to, just kind of for clarity, so, you know, we've talked about in Finance Committee, and I think here in the board meetings as well, the, kind of the frequency or the plan that you have laid out around when we do budget amendments and why, can we just run through that as a reminder?
Yes, so typically, excuse me, so each year, in June of each school year, we're required to approve a preliminary budget, and so, we do that really as the first step for the next fiscal year, which begins July 1st. Typically, our first amendment to that budget, which would be the second time we talk about it, would be at our September board meeting, and that's because that's when we approve our tax rate. The third amendment, or I'm sorry, the second amendment to the original preliminary budget is typically in January or February, and a lot of that is just the timing on when the board meeting is in January, how our local tax revenue is coming in, because that gives us, you know, the biggest piece of our revenue. And so, either January or February is a good timeframe for that. And then typically, the last amendment, the final amendment, which is required to make sure that the budgeted expenses are greater than actual expenses as required by Missouri statute, we do that in June. Occasionally, there may be a need for another budget amendment in between there, but typically, that's the cycle, preliminary budget in June, and then three budget amendments as you go through the fiscal year.
Agreed.
And then, with this, I'll just run through real quick the highlights, if that's okay.
Yeah.
The, so what you see here is our second budget amendment, and if you want to look at really the three, I'm sorry, the two boxes there, they're highlighted in yellow. The first is our starting balance and the incidental fund. That is unchanged, the dollar amount from our budget amendment in September. The percentage there changed from 33.49 to 33.57, a very minor percentage change, but in the right direction. That's just due to the final ASBR and the audited fund balances. What is different with this budget amendment is our ending fund balance, which has improved by just over $3 million from what we anticipated in September. And the ending balance, which right now is slated to be just over 78.3 million, which works out to be the exact same percentage, that was not intentional, just it worked out that way when we were plugging in our amendments. The, so that is an improvement, so it's always nice to give a positive budget amendment update, and that is primarily due, as I said in the Finance Committee, to one thing, and that's interest rates. A significant change even from September, when I look at our daily liquid interest rate, it's moved over two percentage points from when we had that board meeting in September. And so, with our fund balances, that's a significant movement even over the course of five, six, seven months in terms of the revenue we can generate. So, the primary revenue adjustments are all related to interest and/or grants that we've put into the budget. Grants are budget-neutral because you're going to budget as much in the revenue column as you do in the expense column. The other adjustments, which I've been highlighting in finance, is our contracted services, our supplies, they're coming in a little bit higher than we would like at this point in the year, so I've adjusted those amounts. Even with those adjustments, we still have a positive budget amendment, so. Questions?
Board members, do we have any questions around that? All right. Thank you, Mr. Holder. So, we'll call for a vote. Mrs. Smart, can we do a roll call vote on this, please?
Board Member Murdock?
Aye.
Vice President Fritchie?
Aye.
Board Member Sparks?
Aye.
Board Member Foley?
Aye.
Board Member Eslic?
Aye.
President Campbell?
Aye. Motion carries unanimously. Now, we'll move on to Item 7, our Items for Consent Decision. Can I get a motion?
I move to approve the consent agenda items as presented.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Mrs. Smart, can we do a roll call for this, please?
Vice President Fritchie?
Aye.
Board Member Sparks?
Aye.
Board Member Foley?
Aye.
Board Member Eslic?
Aye.
Board Member Murdock?
Aye.
President Campbell?
Aye. Motion carries again unanimously. So, now we'll move to Item 8, Items for Decision, and the first item is Item 8.01, the annual fuel purchase. Can we get a motion, please, on that?
I move that the board approve Carter Energy to supply diesel and unleaded fuel to the LSR 7 Transportation Department.
Do we have a second?
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Do we have any discussion? I do appreciate your update, Board Member Eslic, sharing the details around each of these items. Thank you for doing that.
Welcome. Maybe it makes it go faster, right?
It does. All right. Mrs. Smart, can we do a roll call vote on that, please?
Board Member Sparks?
Aye.
Board Member Foley?
Aye.
Board Member Eslic?
Aye.
Board Member Murdock?
Aye.
Vice President Fritchie?
Aye.
President Campbell?
Aye. Motion carries unanimously. So, now we'll move to Item 8.02, the Sports Graphic Inc. Contract. Can we get a motion on that, please?
I move for the board to approve the contract with Sports Graphics Inc. in the amount of $16,629.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Mrs. Smart, can we do a roll call vote, please? Oh, do we have any discussion? Okay. Can we do a roll call vote, please?
Board Member Foley?
Aye.
Board Member Eslic?
Aye.
Board Member Murdock?
Aye.
Vice President Fritchie?
Aye.
Board Member Sparks?
Aye.
President Campbell?
Aye. Motion carries unanimously. We'll move on to Item 8.03, Index Restaurant Supply for Bernard Campbell Middle School and Trail Ridge Elementary Walk-In Freezer and Cooler Replacement. Can we get a motion on that?
I move that the Board of Education approve a contract to index restaurant supply for walk-in refrigeration and freezer equipment at Bernard Campbell Middle and Trail Ridge Elementary Schools at a cost of $131,915 is detailed in the bid tabulation.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any discussion?
I do have one on this one, only to ask, do we have other issues related to this kind of purchase that's coming that we essentially kind of just need to be aware of, like the, since it is such an expensive purchase, obviously, and with the repairs, like what's the, essentially, I guess, Kyle, what I'm asking is, and I'm sorry to bring you up here, is just how are we looking at all of these units essentially throughout to make sure that we're not spending more on the repairs than it would cost us essentially in the long run to go ahead and
Yes, we do work with Lori Donella to prioritize her walk-in freezers and coolers. Our staff also maintains the rest of her, just everyday kitchen equipment, the reach-ins as well as her ovens. We do have several pieces of equipment left in the district that have older refrigerant in them that is more expensive and it's hard to get, so we are prioritizing those first. We're planning on, just so that we have some even spending and a replacement cycle that we can maintain in the future, as you guys may remember, I mean, we're replacing a couple of boxes every year, and that keeps us in a good long-range replacement cycle. We feel good about the other equipment in the district and our guys' ability to keep those running until we need the next round of replacement. Yep, you're welcome.
No other questions? We'll move to a vote. Mrs. Smart, can we do a roll call vote?
Board Member Eslic?
Aye.
Board Member Murdock?
Aye.
Vice President Fritchie?
Aye.
Board Member Sparks?
Aye.
Board Member Foley?
Aye.
President Campbell?
Aye. Motion carries unanimously. We'll move to Item 8.04, the Converge One Network Equipment Support. Can we get a motion and a second on that, please?
I move that the board approves the Converge One Contract for Network Equipment Support in the amount of $29,484.34.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any questions or discussion? All right, let's move to a roll call vote, please.
Vice President Fritchie?
Aye.
Board Member Murdock?
Aye.
Board Member Sparks?
Aye.
Board Member Eslic?
Aye.
Board Member Foley?
Aye.
President Campbell?
Aye. Motion carries unanimously. We'll move to Item 8.05, the Converge One Network and Marriachi Hardware. Can we get a motion and a second on that?
I move that the board approve the contract with Converge One in the amount of $84,667.98.
Second.
All right, we have a motion and a second. Any discussion on that? Okay, then, Mrs. Smart, can we do a roll call, please?
Board Member Murdock?
Aye.
Vice President Fritchie?
Aye.
Board Member Sparks?
Aye.
Board Member Foley?
Aye.
Board Member Eslic?
Aye.
President Campbell?
Aye. Motion carries unanimously. We'll move on to Item 8.06, Converge One Network Licensing Enterprise Agreement. Can we get a motion and a second there?
I move that the board approve the contract with Converge One in the amount of $575,886.60.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any discussion or questions?
It probably just needs to make sure that it gets noted that this is three years' worth of license renewals. This is not a one-year thing that we'll see come back at $575,000. I know we got that in our board packet, but I think that that's important to note, that this is a three-year contract for this, and so, Dr. Whaley, good job on this one, I think is what we're saying, so.
Thank you, Board Member Murdock. Vice President Fritchie?
Yes, and I also wanted to add to that comment. I was the one that asked those questions in the board packet about these because I wanted to make sure of the amounts, because each of these descriptions states that we get a 40% rebate. Is that correct, Dr. Whaley?
Yeah, absolutely. So, what we'll do is we'll pay the bill, and then we reach out to E-Rate and request reimbursement for up to 40%. I mean, that number is based off our free reduced lunch status plus our student enrollment. So, the federal government establishes a formula that basically says where our reimbursement rate will be. So, yes, that is correct.
Very good. So, on each of these last three, 8.04, 05, and 06, we'll get a 40% rebate after.
That's correct. And the third one, since it's a three-year contract, we have to request reimbursement each of the three years. So, we'll go back next year, request reimbursement, we'll do that again the third year.
Okay. Thanks very much for working on that.
Absolutely.
And for Christopher Taglia for working on that, too.
All right. No other questions or discussion? We'll move to a roll call vote, please.
Vice President Fritchie?
Aye.
Board Member Sparks?
Aye.
Board Member Foley?
Aye.
Board Member Eslic?
Aye.
Board Member Murdock?
Aye.
President Campbell?
Aye. Motion carries unanimously. So, now we'll move on to Item 9.01, our Special Services Department Annual Program Evaluation. And Dr. Stacy Mathis, Executive Director of Special Services, will share that program review.
Thank you. Good evening. I'm excited to talk about our Special Services Department. It's always good to be able to share some strengths and celebrations, which we will get to here in the end, but just want to do a little bit of an overview of the program. This is an ongoing program evaluation that reflects a lot of the same information that you see in my written report for the past couple of years, and so, just some updated information from that. We do serve our, sorry, we do serve students from ages 3 to 21. Of course, our parent educators are helping with those early screenings and helping to identify some students, and we do get them referred from First Steps Program through the state of Missouri for evaluation, and so, we can start serving students as early as 3 at our Early Childhood Center, and we serve students until they turn 21, if that's appropriate according to their IEP. Some of our students on IEPs do graduate with their cohort at the same time, but other students do have eligibility to receive a free and appropriate public education until they turn 21. First, this is a child count, just showing a graph of kind of what our numbers have looked like over the past few years. On December 1, we call it the December 1 Count, we report those numbers through Moses to Desi, and we get an updated count of that information. Because we've switched over to Power School Special Programs as our special education software, our data is even sturdier than it has been before, I would say, because it connects directly with our student information system. As you can see, this breaks down each eligibility category as of December 1 for this school year, and you can see we have had an increase in enrollment of our total 3 to 21 enrollment. We have increased 76 students since December 1 last year overall, and 73 of those are K-12. We do have activities and tasks and things that we work on within our department that are directly related to the board priorities. So, for Board Priority 1, about meeting each student where they are by utilizing that equity lens in all of our decisions, actions, practices, and resource supports, we have been really digging into evaluation identification and the IEP process overall. That supports this priority just in and of itself what we do in special education. But we've also been doing specific work to really drill down our data at the district level and at the building level to look at how we are to look at how we are placing students in different eligibility categories from the reports that we get from the state, looking at discipline, and if we have over-identification of students who are receiving discipline, who have disabilities, and what we can do to help to prevent that. Also, identification and other noticeable trends, and we'll talk about a few of those things through some data. Our, the second board priority about increasing achievement, we have really been looking at a review of all of our instructional resources in the district to provide accessibility and that consistency across programs. So regardless of which school you attend, based on where you live, you have access to similar resources and instructional tools. We've also really looked at increasing clubs and unified peer groups that are forming at schools in addition to the Peer Inclusive Environment courses and the PE mentors that have been in existence for years, even before we added that Peer Inclusive Environment course. We're continuing to work to really enhance access for our families to community resources and information that is out there for recreation and leisure activities, for community-based support and resources while they're in attendance in the school district and after they leave us. We've also worked hand-in-hand with Shannon Booth's department to really increase the community-based instruction opportunities for our students. For Board Priority Three, really strengthening those, that communication, building engagement, collaboration, and confidence with stakeholders. Our Transition and Resource Department has really focused on things like our Community Resource Expo. We really increased attendance for that with our resources that were in attendance as well as attendees this year. Looking at the Reverse Career Fair, which is coming up this spring, and you'll be getting information. I think I sent a save the date already for that, but we're definitely looking for businesses in the community to come ready to hire our students that have really been training for employment opportunities. Also, department communication that we send out internally, I send that out semi-regularly. They usually get five to six department communications from me within the entire Special Services Department. We communicate information through monthly department meetings at the buildings, talk about some of the issues with data that we're discussing and ways of increasing that and how we can address it. And of course, increased community-based instruction that I've talked about. We have also really focused on family engagement and collaboration, and Family Focus Groups were held last spring to really talk about how we can engage and how we can better communication, communicate with our families. We'll be holding another couple of those this spring. But also sent out a communication at the beginning of the year, one in January, and then we'll do one at the end of the school year as well to really kind of highlight some of the activities that they may want to get connected with, some of the things going on with the department, resources that may be available, and family nights as well. This is just a little bit of a highlight of the Community Resource Expo. The pictures on the left show that, and there's also a link to a January family newsletter if you're interested in looking at what our families of students on IEPs receive. And we just use the Power School School Reach Program to be able to do that.
Dr. Mathis, they get a PDF in their packet.
Oh, they can't wait.
Can you send a link to Linda so she can include it in the packet after the fact?
Yes, I will. Sorry about that. So the pictures on the left kind of show that attendance of our Community Resource Expo from the fall. And then the picture on the right shows a special programs college night. Many colleges are developing programs for some of our students who would not be, you're typically developing students who would take a regular college course load, but for some of our students who might be served in more modified curriculum classes or within our Life Skills programs. So we hosted a family night for our families to come in and learn about three different college programs that exist. One of our former students actually participated in that program at Missouri State, and he actually spoke to our families as well and came back. Financial implications, just a little bit of a breakdown that I usually include in program evaluation that kind of shows the overall total dollars spent and how that breakdown is for state, local, and federal. This year, we have the American Rescue Plan Grant that we've been working through, spending some of those ESER funds that are very specific for special education. We have been working on fun things like the Miller Park Center All-Inclusive Playground, things like other sensory equipment and instructional supplies and resources for our buildings, as well as assessment tools that we may need to look at whether or not they're culturally responsive. Some of our testing materials, we want to make sure that we don't have bias within those and have options for different populations of students. So we've been working through the cross-categorical teacher groups, our related service provider groups, our instructional evaluation specialist and school psychologists to be able to provide input for materials and resources that we can do to enhance our students' experience. High Need Fund reimbursement, we submit for students who it costs more than three times the typical ADA amount that we receive per student, we can submit for reimbursement. And this year, for last year's use, we will be receiving that amount of over five hundred thousand dollars. And then Medicaid, we also have been receiving cost settlement. Last year was the first year I reported on that information, and they're two years back. So from 2021, our cost settlement is estimated at over seven hundred thousand, and that money all goes back into the general fund.
Dr. Mathis, before you leave that slide, so you and I both went to Washington, D.C. last July, same week.
We did.
Different days, but same week.
Yes.
To advocate on your first bullet there, because the federal percent, I believe in IDEA Part B is supposed to be the feds pay forty percent?
Actually, when it first came out, they were supposed to be fully funding IDEA. It's never been really over eighteen percent, I believe, was the number that I heard.
So Dr. Mathis and I both went to our U.S. senators and representatives advocating for meeting the obligation they made to special education throughout the nation, so, because they're not meeting it nationwide, not just for us.
Absolutely.
And I'll add to the High Needs Fund, so let me make the math kind of, let's say we spend an average of ten thousand dollars, because it's easy, it can be a whole number, right, on an average kid, and then I have special needs where the district has spent about forty-five thousand dollars on. They have to, we have to spend that forty-five thousand this year. Then next year, we can look back and say, hey, we were fifteen thousand higher than three times the average. So ten thousand times three is thirty thousand, but I cost forty-five thousand, so we can ask for reimbursement of that fifteen thousand. That's a lot of work for our folks to track everything they track to do so. So I can't thank Dr. Mathis and her team, as well as working with the business department to do that.
Thank you. And yes, I'll be going to Washington, D.C. again. And Advocacy Day here in Missouri is coming up at the end of March.
That's great. Excellent. Board Member Eslick?
I just had a quick question. On that High Need Fund, is that, that's a federal fund or is that a state fund?
It is a federal fund, and so the state gets those funds, and we are not guaranteed every dollar that we claim for reimbursement. So based on what they get, then they can distribute those funds.
That being said, I can't remember not getting the funds we request, but it is federal dollars that give to the state and the state administers it.
Okay, thank you. Well, second part of my question comment was actually just a thank you because, again, we, I briefly talked about the cumbersome nature of federal funding programs. Thank you for going through all of the red tape to recoup tax dollars for our community. I appreciate you. Thank you.
Thank you. I have a great team. It's definitely a team effort because it's a lot of number crunching.
Board Member Murdoch?
Okay. Based on your two answers, it brought up another question for me. Federal fund, can't remember a time that we haven't gotten the reimbursement. What does the state do with the extra money that must be most likely left over? Where does it go?
I believe, and Nathan, you maybe know this answer, but the federal government doesn't allow you to have the dollars for more than three days if you haven't spent it yet. So I don't believe they actually send it through. I think, I think the state.
They're not a true pass-through.
I think the state is a true pass-through, but I don't think they have it sitting in a bank account.
Okay, all right, thanks.
All right, any other questions?
Nathan, do you have further information? Yeah, it's federal funded, but it's state administered. Okay, we'll tell you what, we'll find that answer for you.
Great. Go ahead. Do you have any, anything else?
Oh, I'm still, yeah, sorry. Okay, so also the annual program goals and action steps. We have been working on inclusive practices and data review and analysis. I've mentioned some of those activities, but they are here for your review as well. Also, looking at transition and resources, I've mentioned some things, and there was a shout-out for Choose to Include Event earlier in the, in the evening, and that was definitely a kickoff to really inspiring some additional unified opportunities for our students to get involved in clubs, activities, and athletics there at their schools. But we also do have Special Olympics teams that are connected with the district that we're trying to grow as well. This is just a snapshot of our placement data, and this is based on the special education profile data from last year, the twenty-one, twenty-two school year. We have been working on increasing that percent of students that are inside the regular classroom, eighty percent or more, and that's at fifty-one point four percent, which is a slight increase from the school year before. I will also say when we did a quick, like, snapshot view of December one count, we're at fifty-five percent this year. So hoping to continue to see students in more inclusive opportunities. This also shows like a breakdown of those educational environments over time and how we've been building back up in that eighty percent or more category. This shows a breakdown of incidence rates by types of disabilities. You can see each race ethnicity is represented by a color. You can look at the total district enrollment in this first column and see what the overall percentage of total district enrollment is. And then there's a breakdown of the total IEP count and shows how many incidence rates of students who are eligible for a disability in that particular race ethnicity. And that's data that we are looking at within our teams, and we're breaking down and drilling down at the building level, too, because, like I said, we want to make sure our materials and evaluation processes are definitely culturally responsive. This is a follow-up of previous year's graduates. You can see the number of students on IEPs that graduated and what they're up to after graduation. We did have just kind of a brief summary of this, it kind of shows the breakdown, but the number of students on IEPs that graduated that were total, that were employed or continuing their education was seventy percent that we could confirm. The four-year graduation rates comparing district and state, we continue to exceed the state percentage there, so that's definitely a celebration. I've mentioned some of the things that we've looked at, the December one count data, the special education profile data. We also have other survey data, and we're continuing to track the participation in extracurriculars and co-curriculars as well. And I believe we can tease out if those club sponsors, to respond to that question from earlier, if they're indicating that that student is participating, we'll be able to identify students who are on an IEP through Power School. Strengths and celebrations, I thought, would be more fun in photos. So the Choose to Include Event, these are just a couple of pictures from that. I think Roderick Sparks is pictured in one of those, taking a picture. But this is also a QR code. If you're interested, here's my plug. If you're interested in volunteering or learning more about Special Olympics or becoming a unified partner or an athlete, it's right there to scan. But we definitely had a great turnout for that, and it was a wonderful beginning to a partnership with the Kansas City Chiefs as well. They also came and hosted a flag football clinic for our Special Olympics athletes and unified partners, and they also donated some flag football kits to our PDE department. These are just some of the, the great things that we have going on, some of our great students and staff, pictures from ESY last year, a coffee cart at one of our elementaries at Summit Point. We do have various student-run businesses in different schools where there are special programs, and they often have peer partners or mentors that support them as well. The Peer Inclusive Environment, I mentioned as a course, and this is at least Summit West. They by far have the largest program right now. That's the coffee cart on the left there. And then that's their whole group because all of their Pi kids came to the Choose to Include Event. So that's their whole group at the event. We've also been trying to promote some of the things about special education and, and really educate our community about special services and the things that our students can do and want to connect. And so these are just a couple of the plugs for the podcasts that have been done through Katie Bergen's department this year. And then, of course, we have the exciting groundbreaking happening at Miller Park Center for the new flight building. Paradise Park renovations are also underway to continue to educate our youngest learners. Opportunities for improvement, I've mentioned a couple of things about the data. We'll continue to analyze that data, collaborate with building teams to look at discipline, look at identification data, look at overall achievement data, and really continue to develop some next steps at the building level. I think we've talked about some things at the district level, and we're ready to hone in kind of at the building level and make some individual building goals as well. We're continuing to increase opportunities like co-teaching practices and professional learning. We've done a lot of that at the middle school level, trying to expand now to the high school level. So definitely continuing to work through those things and streamlining those resources for our families and engaging them on a more regular basis. One of the things I've heard from the Family Focus Group is that sometimes they do feel like the overall information doesn't apply, and so making sure to highlight when it really does matter for them to pay attention, which is why I started a special communication for that group. And then I also have some calendars that they can follow. But these are upcoming evaluation questions that we'll be working on, as I mentioned, with some of those opportunities to look at. We'll be trying to answer these questions as we do some data review over the next year, and I'll provide that through written report next February. Upcoming program goals and action steps, not a lot of change, except that we're really modifying that transition and resource to really increasing family engagement opportunities, because that's what we're hearing from our families. There are links there that I will provide separately, since it's a PDF. But you can always follow our Google Calendar of resource events for family nights and things that we hold. And there's also a Special Olympics calendar. Couple of quick plugs, our five-v-five Special Olympics Unified Basketball Team is going to state the last weekend in March, so I'll be in St. Louis. Then next Tuesday, we're holding an AAC Device Family Information Night. Kelly Moore, our Assistive Technology Specialist, who's an SLP, a speech-language pathologist, is hosting a night for families to come and learn a little bit more about how they can use communication devices with their own child. And we're providing childcare with partnership with Ashley Turner's Teacher Academy. She's providing some students that are going to come over and help me play with kids while their parents get to learn. So those are just a few examples of some of the fun stuff we have going on.
Questions? That's great. Dr. Bug?
Mr. Holder, good catch. It is both state and federal, so I sent you the manual. It's a fifteen-page manual. But it lays, it doesn't lay what percent of each one it is. But to answer your question specifically, if it is short, they, in the manual, it says they will ask for a supplemental funding from the state. And again, in my twenty-one years of administration, I never remember High Needs Fund not being fully funded. So I assume we will continue that route.
Vice President, Vice President Ritchie?
Thank you. Dr. Mathis, thank you. Always am amazed by your reports. I know they've been written the last couple of years, and you have a rotation where you get to actually do it in person, so it's kind of fun listening to you highlight those highlights in person. I think the highlights that particularly stood out to me tonight were the communication with parents and the engagement opportunities for parents to come and engage with their kids, because I think oftentimes, parents don't realize how they can be a part of some of those activities. And communication is always, you know, sometimes has roadblocks to it. But I think that it's fun, having, I've said this before, but having lived with a special ed teacher growing up, I know how hard they work, and I know how hard they want to, they work to engage their students and how that parent communication piece can and how that parent communication piece can sometimes be hard. But it is very, very rewarding. And so thank you to each and every one of your staff members who go through that. Just, just a big kudos to your department and all of, it's so many moving pieces. I know that. So thank you for all of your hard work.
Thank you for that. We have amazing teachers, related service providers, peer professionals. The list goes on and on. We have, we have a really great team.
Yeah, I think a couple of things that you pointed out about the parent partnerships and the nights of having them come in and providing childcare, that's, that's fantastic because that's engaging our parents in every step along the way and the opportunities that are available for their kids. So thank you for all the hard work everybody does, but also for that great connection with parents. Thank you.
All right, any other questions or discussion? Board Member Sparks?
Uh, no question. Yes, it's an ask. So first, thank you. I appreciate, as Vice President Fritchie stated, your reports are very thorough, detailed, give us a lot of information, and I appreciate that. I also appreciate the photos that you tend to add with your reports. It's always good to be able to see it in action. This is just an ask of mine, and it'll be a pretty standard that I'll be asking. And that is to give us baselines on progress. And the reason why I'm going to start asking for that is because we are a district of high standards, and we've been. I want to challenge us, even though we already have a high bar, how are we still setting goals to even be better? And so I think seeing that baseline of where we are and then being able to contribute, what action items are we doing to make great strides? And so if we can just see that, I would appreciate that. But continue the great work, and anything that I can do to support, let me know.
Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Mathis.
Thanks.
We will move on now to items of information, our written reports. And 10.01, Building Level Engagement with Board Priorities for R7 Online. Vice President Fritchie?
Thank you. 10.01 is Building Level Engagement with Board Priorities. And this month, for those of you who didn't read your agenda and click those attachments, it is the R7 Online, and it's the elementary folks who, who filed the report this month. And I really loved seeing that LSR7 Elementary Online Report because, you know, we always hear from the schools and everything, and we see them in front of us at the beginning of the meetings. But just to hear from our online academy and see what those kids are doing, all of the photos of the students and their activities, that was really great. And the colorful presentation that they really highlighted some of the really cool things that they're doing in the online academy, all those components of the program and the activities that the students get to do. So I just thought it was a really great report this month, and I learned quite a bit in just a one, simple one-page presentation. So if you want a quick highlight and you want to see what the heck are our online students doing, that's a great report to look at in our agenda. But can I move on to 10.02?
Let's do it.
Okay.
Moving on to 10.02.
Okay, all right. And that's the Diploma Plus Annual Program Evaluation. And for those of you out there who aren't familiar with Diploma Plus, that's a whole nother big presentation. I mean, the report is here, but it's not just about a diploma, folks. It's about what we're doing from the time they're little all the way through when they graduate, from kindergarten through seniors. And first, I'd just like to thank Shannon Booth back there, who put this very comprehensive 25-page report together. That was like reading a novel almost. Okay, yeah. It is, no pictures. Yeah, Roderick points out, Board Member Sparks points out, no pictures. Yeah, it was a lot of reading. But I'll tell you what, it is, it is packed with info. And if you don't know about our career education programs in the district, you got to read this report. Our Career Education Department certainly has worked diligently to provide a broad spectrum of opportunities for our students from kindergarten through their senior year. And I also appreciate that we have added on the Portrait of a Graduate questions to the graduate follow-up survey. I think that's, that is important to survey our graduates to see, graduates to see exactly what they're thinking. I certainly hope that our efforts in the area are impacting our graduates and empowering them to be more prepared and confident as global citizens. Because I mean, that's our aim with all of our career ed, is to help them in, in their futures. And I would just like to thank every single staff member who's contributing to this effort. And I don't just mean our career navigators and our career ed and our, and our vocational tech teachers, but I mean every single teacher who contributes to this. Because I know it's just not those career ed teachers. They're doing this in advisory programs, components of this program. And I would say it virtually touches every classroom in our district. So I would like to thank all of our staff members and support staff members who support this program too, that benefits all of our students. So thank you very much.
Thank you. Item 10.03, our Bond Budget Update. Any questions or discussion on that? All right. Hearing none, we'll go ahead and adjourn our meeting this evening. And thanks, everybody, for joining us, and great meeting.